I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unwavishable, undeniably, indivisible, free, just, and all.
All right. Item 119 approval. Recreation Department, summer fall events on the Common. Kelly, you wanna come on up and give us some highlights? I already looked at the pretty impressive list that's included in our backup here.
Thank you so much for entertaining us tonight. So in front of you, you'll have our summer concert series information. We will once again have family concerts on Tuesday nights and children's shows on Wednesday nights on the Common from June 27th through mid-August. Once, hopefully, there's not very many, but once the rain dates kinda kick in, it usually goes through the middle to the end of August. We'll also have Celebrate Burlington on Saturday, August 5th. Truck Day will happen on September 17th this year. And our Trucktober event, which is our food truck event, hopefully will take place on October 14th.
Oh, nice. You know, I missed the food truck event last year. But it could turn out, or?
Yeah, it was, yeah. Yep.
It sounds like it might be a lot of fun.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Kelly, Kelly, could you just bring the board up to speed on the fabulous grant that you guys got recently?
Sure, I sure can do that. So the department has received a grant from the Office of Health and Human Services, from the Commonwealth, in the amount of $187,100, no, $872 for therapeutic recreation programming to expand on our current offerings and add some limited new programs as well.
Oh, wow, wonderful.
Yeah, so we're very excited about that.
We've actually, we've been pretty fortunate the last few years with Commonwealth's been very kind to us in a number of areas.
Yeah, our departments do a great job of writing grants for their departments. So it's all done in-house and we've gotten quite a bit of funding for a variety of different projects over the past several years.
Very fortunate. Gentlemen, anything you wanna add?
Uh, yeah, just quickly, Kelly. I think I ask this every time we do this. Annex is open for bathroom use, but do we have any porta potties out?
We do not put a porta potty out on the Common, we use the annex.
The annex is the main.
But last year, I believe the board did vote to put a porta potty out there as well.
Which we could do is what, we could do again if that's what the board's pleasure is for the summer.
Was it well, was it well-used? That's a crass question asked, and I apologize. But if, I mean, if, if people are gonna be using the annex and it's preferred indoors, it's not a porta potty, then, you know, we don't have to do that. You know, but I mean, you know.
The accessibility piece is the, is the problem with the annex. The fact that there's stairs there, there is an accessible unit anywhere on the Common. So, I mean, I do think if the board has the ability to do so, it would be beneficial to the community, yes.
Yeah, well, then, I mean, for accessibility reasons, I would propose that we do that again this year.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll set that up for the same timeframe as we did last year, if that's what the board wishes.
We didn't get any complaints that you know of, did you? Did we? Having it out there for the summer?
No.
Okay. All right. Mike, Joe, anything for Kelly?
No, no.
Just real quick, Kelly, this is unbelievable. This is what makes Burlington Burlington, all these different events up here. That's all part of what you guys do over there at the Recreation Department. So I think it's wonderful. There is something, I'm gonna make a quick comment on Celebration of Burlington. I believe Dave Norton's gonna sit in the dunk tank this year. Just in case he's watching this. So kinda made a little deal with Brendan last year of the dunk tank.
Okay.
It's gonna be, it's to raise money for a fund. We just haven't figured out what fund's gonna get the money.
Oh, okay.
So I know everything's free on the Common, but just to bring it up quickly, we, we set a limit of $5 for three balls. And Dave, I hate to say this, and myself, will be sitting in the dunk tank this year.
Oh, okay.
So there'll be a lot of guys out there. I wanna weigh a lot of money, 'cause I'm gonna rig it so it doesn't, doesn't work. So I don't get dunked, but yeah.
You'd be a very successful fundraiser if you did.
Wow, okay.
There'll be a lot of people just dying just to go up and push it instead of actually hit it with the ball. But so plan on that particular day, that there'll be a couple guys sitting in that dunk tank. But we just have to figure out what, where the money's gonna go. Who it's gonna go to, whether we split it up or whatever. But Brendan and I will talk about that, all right?
All right, sounds great. You let me know what, what we're doing.
Okay, great.
Okay, anything further, Michael?
Yeah, Kelly, I just also wanted to reiterate, that's an impressive list. And we're so lucky to have such a great Recreation Department here in town with all the activities you guys do, I don't know how you do it all, but thank you, this looks awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay, can I motion to approve the schedule as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion approved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, it's 4-0-0. There you go. Kelly, you gonna stick around just for this, for this next item, in case, in case the girls need you?
Yeah, I'm just gonna slide over here so they can have my coupons.
Thanks, Kelly.
Yeah, not a problem.
All right. Item 120. Girl Scouts Cultural Festival Silver Award Project. Linda, you wanna bring the girls up, or you just gonna?
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
She's making us do it on our own. You don't have it too.
I suppose I can come.
Yes, in case.
Did you want me to do like a brief introduction, or do you want them to do the introduction?
They can do their, they can do their introduction. If they're not bashful, go ahead, belt it out.
It's part of the scouting experience is, you know, coming out of your comfort zone.
There you go, okay.
You guys got this.
All right, ladies.
Thank you, members of the Select Board, for inviting us to meet with you today. My name is Magna Dineesh.
And my name is Gwyneth Agneme.
We are Cadet Girl Scouts and current eighth graders at Marshall Simons Middle School, working on our Silver Award, one of the highest awards in Girl Scouting. To earn our reward, we need to create, manage, and execute a project that leads to positive change within our community. For our Silver Award, we anticipate holding a Culture Night at Simons Park. The date is still to be determined, but we are in cooperation with the Parks and Recreation Department. We hope that this event will broaden individuals' outlooks on how many different cultures are represented in our community. Even though we all live in the same town, we are still so diverse. We would like to thank Ms. Kelly Layman for mentoring us and for allowing the Burlington Parks and Recreation Department to partner with us for this event. Mrs. Layman's knowledge, experience, and connections are valuable assets to both of us in this project and to the Burlington community. For our Culture Night, we are hoping to have many stations or tables hosted by various organizations, as well as individuals from as many backgrounds and cultures that we can find. We have reached out to 30 contacts, inviting them to participate in our event. These contacts represent 22 different cultures or countries. We have received three yes responses, six no responses, and one maybe. We sent our reminders to those who we haven't heard back from, and we are hoping to, for more positive responses.
We have reached out to all the Girl Scout families and Girl Scout troops in Burlington, inviting them to participate as Girl Scouts, are part of a global organization with sister scouts and guides in over 150 countries. Here in Burlington, we have 172 registered Girl Scouts, ranging from kindergarten through 11th grade in 18 active troops. We have also reached out to both BSA Scout troops in town, but neither have any scouts who are able to participate. We have been given permission from the school administrative offices to place our flyers in all of the schools, encouraging any and all families to join us in holding our celebration. While we are trying not to get discouraged, we are hoping that the Select Board will support our efforts as well as offer suggestions on how we can make this event successful. The Girl Scout mission is to build girls' courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. With your help, we can achieve this mission together. Thank you for your time.
Excellent, excellent. Now, I understand that the Silver Award project is sort of akin to the Eagle Scout Award in the, in the Boy Scout thing. So this is, this is quite a big, quite a big step in your career with the Girl Scouts.
Yes.
It's a very noble endeavor as well. I think the, the idea of, you know, this type of event and including the entire community, I think that's wonderful. And I'm sure you can count on each of us here tonight to help out in any way we possibly can, so.
Thank you.
We will, we've got a few leads, we know a few folks between us, and see if we can't encourage some participation. Do you have a date specific yet, or are we still working on that?
The date is still to be determined.
Terrific. Gentlemen? Kelly had a question.
I was just gonna add that we had anticipated an event on June 24th, but it does not seem like we will be able to gain enough momentum. So we are now rehearsing and finding a different date that gives everybody more time to participate.
And, well, I'll be happy to work with you. And, you know, if we, if we don't get enough participation, maybe we could blend it with one of the other events that Kelly's having out there. We'll, we'll make it work. We're gonna make, we're gonna make it work.
Yeah, we certainly have, we were chatting just before the meeting today about some different ideas. So we're just gonna pivot a little bit, and it's gonna be great. And we're still gonna be able to put on a really great event for the community that does showcase all of the cultures here in Burlington.
Awesome.
So we're excited about that.
Awesome, very nice. Gentlemen, Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So what type of exhibitors or exhibits are you looking for people to set up? Because I know you're looking, you reached out and would like more people to do that. What, what do you, like, someone set up a table or something?
Essentially, just setting up a table, like, it can either represent your culture as a whole, a holiday in your culture, like, a very special tradition in your culture, stuff like that. Or they can, like, showcase something, like a dance, or like an activity they want other people to do.
Should best of luck, and we'll see if we can help you get some more participation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so first off, amazing. You have chosen something that is not just something to benefit the community, but it is truly a large and ambitious endeavor, which is not something that we always see, and that's fantastic. I would, I would go so far as to say if you do have a date by the Fourth of July, if you wanna walk in the parade and pass out flyers, I see no reason why you couldn't do that to help garner interest and let folks know, you know, that you have a date and what's being planned. You know, have you reached out to all of the religious congregations in town?
Yes, we have.
Okay. How about IAB, the Indian Americans for Burlington?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Yeah, so, I mean, you know, I'll, I'll dig into my contacts as well and see if there's anybody else out there that we can get ahold of. Would you be open to residents just coming and setting up and doing something?
Yes, we did actually reach out to a few of all the kids that we know in school that are from different cultures.
Awesome, okay, excellent. Then, yeah, you know, I mean, when you have a contact info, please don't hesitate to use it. You know, we're here and happy to support, all right? This is, this is wonderful, so we'll, we'll make it happen.
Very cool idea.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. No, this is fantastic. I'm just trying to rack my brain, like, these guys trying to figure out who we can actually call up. But Mike said earlier, between all of us, I think we know quite a few people in town. And I think this will be a fantastic event. And congratulations for even coming forward with it, it's just wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. And you guys, you did terrific addressing this public body. Very proud of you, nice job.
Great job.
Thank you, thank you.
So, all right, thank you, and keep us in the loop.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold, skip Citizens Time right now. I get, I have three proclamations. When we get those first, and I'll circle back to Citizens Time. Nobody objects? Hey, Mr. Brian White, come on up. You're the first, and I'm very proud to do this. I'm doing this every year, and I'm happy to do so.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for the time. So, as you see in front of you, I'm here to ask for the board and administrators' support to proclaim this week National Public Works Week. As you said, this is a tradition we've been celebrating with, with your support for quite a while. I think at least 2009, we keep posters up in engineering, and that's, that's as far back as I can see in the poster, so. So, yeah, our staff takes a lot of pride in the work and services we provide. And I think this, this week of recognition goes a long way with them. I know over the years that I've been with the department, and I've always looked forward to, you know, this appreciation week. So I'm here, first and foremost, to thank you all and the residents for, for support over the years, and respectfully ask the board to continue this tradition and proclaim this week National Public Works Week.
Well, we'd certainly be happy to do so. I know it's a new year, we have some new leadership, and we also have a few new players on the team as well. But my message is the same as it always has been. Very proud of our, our DPW, all the, all the members.
Thank you.
Highway, water sewer, engineering, cemetery, your, your staff. Just an outstanding job. You guys are, never get the recognition you deserve. You're out there at, you know, 15 feet below ground in the middle of a blizzard in February, doing your job, you're always there when we need you. Very, very happy to, to recognize, recognize all of you in the work that you do.
Thank you very much.
Happy to have you here tonight. Gentlemen, you wanna, anything to add, or? Sure, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, I'm also happy to proclaim this National Public Works Week. You guys do a lot of stuff that many people don't see behind the scenes. And you keep, you know, keep the town going and, you know, in the middle of the night, when they're called or water main break, they're always out there. And it's just, very much appreciated all the efforts that Public Works Department does, and never goes unappreciated or unnoticed. So thank you, and happy to, to celebrate this week and honor you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Joe?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, like we're saying, right? No one gets to see really what you do unless it directly affects us. I, you know, owned a home and lived in town, you know, for 11, 12 years. And there was a water main break directly in front of my house, I think it was January, you know? And it was incredible to watch the guys' work, you know? The level of focus and dedication, right? The, my kids were amazed, right? But, you know, to, to take a moment and to recognize all the hard work that goes into keeping Burlington, Burlington is the very least we can do, in my opinion. So just for me, thank you to everyone, you know, that's a part of the DPW department and, you know? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, what, I mean, what can you really say? Everyone saw, we've said a lot. The only thing I'm gonna actually talk about is fill in the shoes of a gentleman that just left who did a phenomenal job in this town. And so far, you've been here, what, not even six months, seven months now? Something like that, and you're doing quite a great job. So all the accolades go to you, because it always starts at the top and works its way down. So keep up the good work and keep the department going the way it has been. This, this town's incredible, works out great for everybody. So thank you for stepping in and doing such a great job with all the guys.
Thank you. I'll just add that if it wasn't for their commitment, I mean, my job wouldn't be this easy, so.
You've got to, they've put together an incredible, incredible team in, over the last several years. Very nice job. Okay, with that, I have a proclamation, and I'm gonna stumble through, if you don't mind, I'm gonna do the best I can here. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs, such as water, sewer, streets and highways, buildings, cemeteries, and solid waste collection. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works employees. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially, materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, we the Select Board of the Town of Burlington do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2023, as National Public Works Week in the Town of Burlington. And we call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life, given, given under our hand this 22nd day of May, 2023, signed by five members of the board. This is for you, my friend, come on up. We'll get you framed for that as well. Thank you, Brian. Okay. Item 123, proclamation, actually got two. Pride Day. Mike, you, do you have the?
Yep, I have Pride Month, yep.
Sure, okay, one, two.
All right.
Before we start, I'm sorry, is it, who's, who's accepting on behalf of the Pride Day? Come on up, I'm sorry, should have, should have done that. All right, well, come on up. You can, you can sort of semicircle there if we don't have enough seats.
Anyone who wants to come up, come up.
Come on up.
It's a party.
Actually, before you start, you, 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 you.
So we have a few words to say, I think, and is it okay if I address both of the proclamations at once? So my name's Nikki Cadillac, I live in Burlington, precinct six. I'm here with a contingent from the LGBTQ community and allies here in Burlington. And we wanted to just say a few words about our friend Leo, and also, sorry, this is gonna be really hard. And accept the proclamation for Leo Day and also for, for Pride Month, which is really important and also a long time coming, I think, here in Burlington. Leo Abramov was a friend to everybody in here, and really to anybody he met. He was a bright light in a world that wasn't always kind to him. And really provided an example for LGBTQ people everywhere and also the youth in our town to, that it's okay to be who you are, that it's okay to live as the person you are. And so when he was diagnosed with cancer last year, just before his 36th birthday, it was a very difficult time for our community, and also right before Pride happened last year. And so there were a lot of confabulating circumstances that happened last year. And now it's been almost a year. Leo passed away in March, and his 37th birthday would be this, June 15th. And so we wanted to come and ask if you would name June 15th, 2023, as Leo Day here in Burlington, at the same time as we make this Pride proclamation for the month of June.
Okay, yes, we, yeah, we've got them, we've got them both covered. And I wanna say, I didn't know Leo, but what I've learned in the, in the last couple of weeks, he was, it sounds like he was somebody quite special, and I think that's fairly obvious by the turnout here tonight, so. Thank you all for being here. You guys, wanna, anything to add, or?
I mean, before we read the proclamations, I'll simply say that I'm a sympathy crier, so thank you guys. I'll be shedding some tears through this whole process as well. I didn't personally know Leo either, but anybody who can step into a community and do what he did is somebody special.
You didn't make it easy, not gonna lie. Next year, we get a flag beat.
And, you know, I think it's great that we can be here honoring him and celebrating Pride Month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, just wanted to thank you guys all for coming, and I'm glad that we have the proclamation, and I'm glad to see the support that everyone's here, and I think it's very important. I'm glad that we're naming June 15th and honoring Leo, and that's pretty cool, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Sure, thank you. Just a great showing, a great showing for a guy that did quite a bit for the community. And what can you say? I mean, death is never easy for anybody, or anything that happens around it. So all the best to his, and hope everything goes well. Glad we have a proclamation here for, for Leo.
All right, Mike, I think you're, okay?
Yep, I'm first with the Pride Month proclamation. Reads, whereas the Town of Burlington supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, welcomes people of diverse backgrounds, and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas all people, regardless of age, color, disability, gender identity, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sexual orientation, or socio-economic background have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, LGBTQIA+ communities offer many valuable contributions to the cultural, academic, civic, artistic, social, and economic successes of the Town of Burlington. And whereas, in support of Burlington's LGBTQIA+ members, groups, and leadership in promoting diversity and inclusivity, the Burlington Public School District's commitment to equity and our own commitment to eradicate prejudice and discrimination everywhere, therefore, the Town of Burlington Select Board here, here does, does hereby proclaim, proclaim the month of June 2023 Pride Month, and encourages all residents to reflect on the difficult work for equality that LGBTQIA+ members face, and to celebrate their valuable contributions to our community. Sign the Burlington Select Board.
Okay, and Nick?
And now for Leo. The Town of Burlington would like to celebrate the life and legacy of Leo Abramov. Leo immigrated to the United States with his family when he was 14 years old. He was an inspiration to all with his positive outlook and contagious smile. And whereas Leo set a positive example for queer and trans youth in the community by living as his true self and being open to answering questions from community members, he showed strength in the face of discrimination and adversity. And whereas, he along with his wife Carrie founded the Burlington Pride Day Celebration, the first event acknowledging and celebrating the queer community in Burlington. He was an outspoken champion of trans rights within our community. And whereas Leo was taken with stomach cancer shortly before his 36th birthday, and was taken by the disease on March 9th, 2023, his 37th birthday would have been June 15th, 2023. Therefore, the Town of Burlington Select Board does hereby proclaim the day of June 15th, 2023 Leo Day, because of his dedication to help to make Burlington, wow, sorry. To help make Burlington a welcoming place for members of the LGBTQIA+ community, and encourage all residents to celebrate his valuable contributions to our community.
All right. Thank you all for coming. Give it just a moment. Oh, maybe they're staying a little bit, I can't. Okay, I guess circle back up to 121. Citizens Time, is anyone in the audience here tonight for Citizens Time? Anybody online here for Citizens Time? Not seeing any of you guys?
No.
Okay. Item 124, procession of temple deities, Bloomington Road, for June 25th. I don't know if anyone from that organization is here. I can circle back to it, or we can go ahead, I mean, which is something we do every time.
Yeah, we're a little bit ahead of schedule, so why don't we skip to the next item and then see if we can come back to it.
Okay. Item 125, our friends from Wegmans are here, come on up.
Good evening. I'm doing well, yourself?
Good to see you again.
You too.
For the record, just introduce yourself.
My name's Jeff Kaczynski with Wegmans Food Markets. Looking to do the same thing we did last year with the Beer Garden. All the parameters are exactly the same, we're just asking for it to be consistent every Thursday instead of picking random dates throughout the month. The feedback that we heard from the Beer Garden was that if, if it was more consistent, people could plan for it, so that's the reason for the ask.
Okay, let me turn it over to Alcohol Subcommittee. Have you guys had a chance to consider this and talk about it, or have any recommendations one way or the other?
Yeah, it went great last year, and I attended a couple of them. And it's very well run, and they, you know, they have very well-run, and they, you know, they have the wristband, so I have no issue with it. They have a, a dedicated area, it's roped, it's, uh, it's cordoned off, so there's a definite, um, distinction on where the event goes on, and it's different from the rest of the store, so I have no issue with this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, um, I agree with Mike, uh, wholeheartedly on everything he said, um, the dates are all written out, if there happens to be a problem, which I doubt very much, because the other ones were run so well, we can always bring you back in front of us again, uh, if anything ever happens, uh, that it was not approved by the board, which I don't see happening, be only because it was so well-taken last year. I mean, so I think this is a better fit for all of us, that we have all the dates in June, July, and August, that you're gonna do this for, um, I wish you the best of luck, and just keep the same criteria you did last time. That'd be great.
Sounds great, thank you.
Nick, any concerns or thoughts?
Uh, no, no, no concerns, no questions, I appreciate how thorough the, uh, the backup was, um, you know, it's always nice to have the diagram, the dates, and everything is right there, easy, uh, so, you know, thank you for taking the time to pull all that together. Uh, yeah, I mean, we've kind of pilates this, it goes well, uh, you know, and, and as always, we reserve the right, if it goes wrong, to revoke dates, but, you know, Wegmans, as a, as a community partner, is, has proved themselves quite trustworthy and a great member of this community, and I see no reason why we shouldn't, uh, approve this for them, so, thank you.
Uh, I agree with you, I was gonna comment as well on the, uh, the paperwork, uh, not surprised, Attorney Devlin's office, always very thorough when they discuss these issues. Uh, I, I, Jeff, I didn't make it out there last year, but I intend to at least make one or two dates myself this year, um, I've heard nothing but good things, so, um, I don't, I don't see any issues. Is there a motion from the board to approve the dates as printed in the backup?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we, uh, approve the dates as printed in the backup to provide Wegmans', uh, one-day alcohol licenses, uh, from June through August.
Okay, motion in a second, anything further? Paul, or Lynn, you guys have any concern to comment, or?
Uh, no, just reiterate with the board members side, Mr. Chairman, uh, we've received nothing but positive feedback, and I have, my, my understanding from the police is it was very well-run and very well-organized, so no issues from, uh, the departments.
Not surprised, not surprised.
The attorney, the attorney, I think she would like.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh.
No, she just raised her hand, so.
Did she ever hand up?
He sent her a request. What's your name? Elizabeth. She's unmuted now.
Yes, this is Elizabeth Cahill Orfanos, I wanted to speak during public comment, but I may have missed that, I apologize.
Okay, no.
Oh, Elizabeth, okay, we're gonna, um, let me come back to you when we're done with this item, okay?
I apologize, thank you so much.
All right, sure.
Attorney.
Thanks, nothing, Ron, uh, Wegmans, we're, we've got a, we've got a motion in a second.
Pause, say four zero zero, there you go, Jeff.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Sure, you're welcome.
Thanks, sir.
Let me, let me get back to Elizabeth, are you there?
No, I'll have to unmute her again. I am here.
Okay, Elizabeth, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, I, um, I appreciate your time, um, I just wanted to pop in quickly, um, I've been attending a lot of meetings in town regarding the Fox Hill Building Committee and, um, and school committee meetings, I'm a parent of young children in the community, uh, I'm a lifelong resident myself, and, um, and I just wanted to take a moment, I'm sure the Select Board is well-informed on, um, the building committee for Fox Hill and Pine Glen, but, um, there is a growing community of parents that are very concerned about, um, the decisions being made, so I wanted to take a moment to just let you know who I am, and that you'll be hearing from me again, um, maybe through email, and, um, another man just to speak about this, because it's a really important decision for our town, and I'm very concerned of the direction that the committee is going, in that we may end up with a very large school in a small and quiet neighborhood that's not on a main road. Traffic is of great concern to a lot of the neighborhood, as it is to me, as I live pretty close to Fox Hill, that being said, um, that's the least of my concerns, I spent my life as a special education teacher, and, um, I'm very concerned about how large schools affect children and their development, their academics, their social, emotional well-being, um, and I've taken the time to research what I know as an educator from being in a classroom, um, and there's a large body of research that supports smaller schools are better for kids. So I just wanted the opportunity to, um, to be sure the Select Board's informed on that, and really thinking about the choices that we're making in terms of the theories behind how we build schools and the sizes of these schools, um, from what I can understand from the research and literature around that, when we build large schools, it's an economy of scale theory versus when we build small schools, which is a connectedness theory that is focused around community, culture, relationship building, in order to, for students to have academic success. And what we find is that in those small schools, academics always rank higher. The safety and the social, emotional well-being of students is always higher in smaller schools. Um, so I share this with you, just to be sure you are all informed, and, um, and I hope you can take the time to be part of some of those meetings. One of my concerns is that when you look at the surrounding communities around us, there are no communities, even out as far as Brookline to, um, to even Cambridge, I think, larger or smaller communities, Chelmsford, Delka, that have a three elementary school model, or have an elementary school with over six hundred students in it. So it's, it's something that warrants a lot of research, and we're not, the parent community isn't feeling all that informed and heard on that piece of it, and are we looking at and having a conversation about what is academically and developmentally best for our children versus a decision that is strictly financial, um, from what I can gather, of why we would go with a large school. That being said, I recognize we need to look at equality across our district, and we need to make triskly sound choices as well.
Okay, well, Elizabeth, thank you, thank you for sharing your, your comments tonight, we, we had some folks comment at the, on our, uh, our last meeting as well.
Okay.
I really don't know what, if any, role we have as a Select Board in, in that decision. I know Mr. Sagarino and Mr. Denizio are on the committee, and they're, they're, um, well-informed about the, the process, I understand it's gonna take several months, um, before any decision is made, so I'm sure there's gonna be plenty of time for, for more dialogue on this, but thank you for, for sharing your, your thoughts with us tonight, I appreciate it.
I appreciate you taking the time to listen, and, um, and I thank you for your service to our community, thanks a lot.
Right, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item. Item one twenty-six has been, uh, postponed for the time being. All righty, um, Subcommittee Reports.
Well, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have, uh, item one twenty-four.
Yes, I apologize, oh, yeah, let's go back to, uh, item one twenty-four, thank you, thank you, feel a little ahead of myself. Uh, I'm comfortable with, with, um, moving ahead, even though there is no representation here tonight, I, I think the rest of the board is familiar with this group, it's been an ongoing.
Yes.
Several years now, without, without incident, the police, uh, escort them up and down Wilmington Road, and it's very nice, actually, very nice procession, from what I hear.
There's never been any issues, it's always gone off without a hitch and smooth, and the police are bold.
Anybody, any comments, questions, concerns, anybody wanna make a motion, and?
I'll make a motion that we approve the procession of temple deities down Wilmington Road for June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second, second my mic, anything further, being done, all in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero, there you have it. Now, Subcommittee Reports. Mr. Priest.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll keep this brief, um. We should be hearing, hopefully in June, from the, uh, Call Center around the Communications Report, uh, which is the big thing that, uh, keep my eye on right now, I'm very excited to have the results on that, um. Economic Development, uh, is going well, Melissa and Alan are doing a fantastic job, as always. Isaac is going through some, uh, they're considering some reorganization changes, uh, but they are also going through their, uh, third-party, uh, assessment, uh, so hopefully we'll have a report at some point in the summer with that. That's all I have tonight.
All right, good Isaac group, are they the ones responsible for setting up those trading? Completed mine today, if you'll.
Yes, yes.
Let you all know, happy to report.
Yeah, or in, in conjunction with our, uh, our, yeah, my ass department, yes, they are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The culprits.
Thank, uh, thank you, Nick, Joe?
Nothing.
Michael?
Um, just a reminder that tomorrow night, and Wednesday night, we are hosting the Burlington Community Design Workshop, I think there's a site tour tomorrow from three to five, and the workshop is from six-thirty to eight-thirty on a Wednesday, I think it goes from like five to eight, it's a visioning meeting, it's to discuss the, uh, future development of the important Mall Road corridor, which affects us all, I think the, uh, information's on the, the either Bring Me to Burlington site, or it's on the town website too, right?
Yes.
For those meetings?
Yes.
And also, uh, just wanted to add that, uh, congratulations to our graduating seniors, graduation's June fourth, and our next meeting won't be till after that, so, uh, just want to remind everyone to be safe, and, um, congratulations to all the seniors graduating this year from Burlington High School.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. Good, any idea how, what kind of response we're getting to their community forum, either of your, um?
Yeah, we're not, uh, getting as many, uh, residents to participate as we would like, so if there's anybody out there watching from home, we would love to, to hear from some different voices, some different folks, uh, just to, to share their opinions on, on the future of the town's commercial district, so.
I think Melissa said we had like thirty or forty people sign up for each session, but you did want more, uh, resident support, and more people who were not connected to, you know, everything, the same people.
All right, I was hoping for a real nice turnout there myself. Chairman's report, um, from the, uh, Veterans Office, Memorial Day's coming up this weekend, Monday, the twenty-ninth, there'll be a, um, ceremony at the, uh, Chestnut Hill Cemetery, uh, Monday, the twenty-ninth, at ten AM. Uh, I don't, I'm not sure who we have as our guest speaker, but it usually, usually gets some pretty interesting folks to, uh, come down there and talk to us. And actually, this Wednesday, they have a flag placement, um, they have volunteers that come down to the cemetery and help place the flags on the, uh, veterans', veterans' graves, uh, between the two cemeteries, uh, that's Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at three-thirty, if anybody would like to go, I know the girls go, the boys go, a lot of people go down there, and, um, anybody who wants to help out, they're, they're, uh, free to do so. And just one other item, uh, we won't meet again until after this, but the Board of Health is sponsoring the annual Hazardous Waste Day, and that will be Saturday, June third, from eight-thirty to noon, um, please check, I can't go through the list of what the, what you can and cannot bring, but if you check the, uh, Board of Health website, they've got a whole list, um, I don't think they want, uh, truck tires and things like that over there, but, uh, there's a whole list of stuff that, good stuff, they can get rid of, motor oil and things like that, uh, it's at Fox Hill School this year, okay? Uh, that's, that's new, usually it's out at the Francis Wyman, this year it's at Fox Hill, June third, eight-thirty to noon. And Mr. Sagarino, to you.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, John, you got anything to add? Sir, there we go, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero.